I adopt the agenda as published. I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second the motion.
The motion second to adopt the agenda as published in discussion. If not, I'll say aye.
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 You guys have it and the agenda is adopted. First of all, welcome to everybody. We appreciate getting together for this evening's going to meeting. It's gonna be a great opportunity to get an update on how our staff has been working together. As well as getting an opportunity to meet the new members of the board and the new leadership. Follow by a tour of the new facility and the community. So without that, unless there's any other pleasantries or other things that we need to do, if we can jump right into the information and then we will move on to some food before we move out to go do the tour. So with that, why don't we go around and do some introductions? Want to start down there with you, Councilman Cavanagh, just work our way around?
Sure. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Luke Cavanagh, I'm on the Meridian City Council.
How long have you been on?
Oh, been on, I'm in the, my fourth year of my second term, so I've been on the city council for eight years. West Ada student, book skins, go Appaloosas, go Jaguars, and really excited to have you all here today.
Hi, Rusty Colfeld, trustee for Zone Four, newest trustee on the board, so I took a seat at the end of January and represent the Zone Four and I live in the city of Eagle.
I'm Brad Hoagland, I represent Seat Three, which means nothing right now, but someday might, when it comes to districts. I was elected here in 2019, but previously served 08 through 13, and so it's my second go around here.
Jessica Perot started my term in January of 2020. Prior to that, served three years as Planning and Zoning Commissioner with Mr. Burnt here. And so, yeah, I look forward to being around for a while.
I'm Renee Ozuna, I have been a West Ada trustee for five years now. I represent Zone Five. I'm a Meridian resident, also am a parent of kids in our district and a grandchild in our district.
I'm Amy Johnson, and West Ada School Trustee for Zone Two, which is South Meridian. And a parent of kids in the district and graduated from the district. And recently chair since December.
Council President Trey Burnt, just announcing our reelection campaign. Been on the, been a city council member for four years and I think I'm gonna do it again, so. Decided to be here this evening and appreciate West Ada being here. You guys are great partners to have and excited to go see the high school.
Robert Simison, been mayor since sixteen months, eighteen months, I don't even know how long. A lot of the stuff of that.
With COVID, it feels like five years.
I live in South Meridian, three kids in the West Ada School, oh, two kids in the West Ada School District now, one graduated last year. But excited to meet the new board members and see where the West Ada District and is gonna go over the next future, so.
Derek Bub, recently appointed superintendent, will start July first. Extremely exciting to get to know you guys and develop that partnership or continue that partnership. Two kids that go to West Ada Schools, so passionate about education. Currently serves as principal at Centennial High School and love my experience there and looking forward to new experience.
This is Strater, nice to meet some of the newer folks and I'm in my second year of my first term on city council. And have had kids that have gone to West Ada Schools, homeschooling currently, and we'll see. And that's what I have for you. Excited about the partnership that we have and especially what we're building together.
I'm Sheena Buffy, I was appointed in November for a one-year appointment, I'm in Zone Three, I live in West Boise. I have three kids in West Ada and then one recently graduated in 2018.
Yeah. I'm Ed Clavenstein, I'm on Zone One, which is the central Meridian area. I've got three kids who've graduated from here. One is getting her doctoral now. Another one is just finishing up her masters. Third is training athletes for Tokyo. So very busy. Love what we, our district and our community has done for my kids and want to pay back, so. And also love the fact that the biker bar is getting painted, so.
Miranda Carson, I'm trustee, or, I said, I would position. Coordination planner for the city of Meridian, doing education and transportation planning. I worked for the West Ada School District for five years as transportation liaison. And then spent about fourteen months in South Florida doing transit and community development. I also have two kids, also a COVID homeschool mom right now. We'll see.
Good evening, so nice to be here. I'm Mary Ann Reynolds, the superintendent of the West Ada School District in my sixth year and appreciate everything we've done together to help take care of our kids. It has been a luscious challenge of a year.
I'm Marcy Horner, this is my ninth year with the West Ada School District and my first year as the Planning and Development Administrator. And I'm happy to be here tonight. Thanks for my thanks.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Well, with that, we're just gonna go into item two and turn this over to Miranda and Marcy.
Were you gonna introduce the other two?
Oh, Dave and Caleb, do you wanna introduce yourselves?
David, I'm Chief Staff. Mary Reynolds, I've been here for about five years now. I've worked in three, three counties, that my office has been part of. So we're trying to stay out of here. It's right to the top of the table.
I'm Caleb, I'm the manager. I have to get also in. I have to get in. I'm very proud of you.
Mr. Mayor.
Hello, Mary.
Caleb, so good to see you, buddy. He's had an uphill battle recently, so glad to see you.
Yeah, I'm Bill Neri, I'm the city attorney. I've been in this position for almost seventeen years. And prior to that, I was on the city council for three years and I've lived in Meridian for about thirty-five years. So I've had four kids graduate from the Meridian School or West Ada School District. So I'm a very big supporter of the district and the schools that we have. Already told Dr. Reynolds personally, I'm happy she's being able to retire and she stepped into this district at a very tumultuous time. I don't know why she did it, but I'm glad she did. But anyway, so that's who I am.
I'm Chris Johnson, city clerk, I've been in the city three years and the last year I've also become IT and whatever else is going on in this room, so, thank you.
All right, with that, I'll turn this over to Miranda and Marcy.
So if it's okay with everybody, I'm just gonna place these. So I was asked tonight to just give an update on the coordination efforts between West Ada and the city of Meridian. So in August, Marcy and I met a few times to look at the student generation rates. To look at the student generation rates first, that was kind of the jumping off point. Go back a little bit, when I first began, my first week, I was asked to make a coordination plan for the city of Meridian with West Ada and I also worked with Marcy on that. What can we coordinate on, what questions do we have from each other? And then in August, we developed the student generation rate, or I should say, we updated it. West Ada has always had a student generation rate that they use for development. So we updated it using census data, mostly local data. We did get a little bit of private homeschool data from the National Center for Education Statistics. And then State Department of Education and census data as well. A lot of analytics went into it, a few meetings, I would say, went into it. And that's where we got our student generation rates and that's probably been one of the biggest pieces of our coordination, having that puzzle piece to use when we're analyzing the impact of development. So ongoing, as developments come up, Marcy and I both create separate impact reports. The school district submits their letter and then I submit a school impact table as well for council to review. And we do those reports separately in separate bubbles, which I think is good. I think it promotes some transparency in the process. We do discuss the reports occasionally afterwards just to look at how our numbers line up. Sometimes you might notice that there are slight differences in the numbers just based on light statistical ways we do it, one to two kid differences. We also occasionally have conversations, what kind of development is this? We're seeing a lot of new types of development in our area that aren't just cut and dry, high-rise apartment or single-family homes. We're seeing a lot of different types coming in. So we do have conversations occasionally of what is this development? Is it single-family, is it multifamily? What kind of numbers are we gonna see coming out of that? We also have pre-application meetings for every developer that wants to come into our city. They can come to the city staff beforehand and have a pre-application meeting to see what they'll need before they go through the lengthy application process. Marcy is invited to attend, or any West Ada representative is invited to attend those. Marcy generally attends, sometimes Joey Oka also attends and weigh in on issues. I also weigh in on any issues that might be related to students or children, just because I have the background from West Ada as well as other planning issues that come up. We also have other cross-involvement. So this year, West Ada invited representatives from every city to attend their Student Attendance Area Committee. Is that the name of the committee? I think it's School Attendance Area Committee. So they invited representatives from every city to attend as ex-officio members to assist in that process however we could. So I did attend some of those early meetings and help however I could through that process. Questions that parents on the committee had regarding development or transportation that was coming in the valley or in different school districts, as well as how the committee had worked in the past. There was, I think, three of us in the room that had sat on prior committees. So just some questions just from the history of how those committees went as well. And as a city, I was very grateful, or as a city staff member, that city staff was invited this year to be on that. So I do appreciate that we had a seat at that table as ex-officio members. We also have seats on our table for ex-officio members from the school district. So we have our Transportation Commission that Ian Updike serves on as a ex-officio commissioner to help with any transportation-related issues we have and weigh in from a school district perspective. He also serves on our School Zone Subcommittee for that Transportation Commission to look at more individual school zones and any transportation-related issues around those. And also this year, I was invited to serve on the district's Safety Bus Area Committee for the schools that were impacted in our area of development. So we have a lot of cross-involvement, that's not just developments. That's a lot of other things where we have overlap between city staff and district staff and it's been great this year to have that coordination between the two and get to talk to the different West Ada members. I know other city staff members talk to West Ada staff as well, it's not just me. There's planners that reach out to them. So the coordination efforts between West Ada and city council are not just me and Marcy. There's a lot of that network that comes together, so that's been really great to see. Marcy and I are in, I would say, weekly communication with each other over development issues, transportation issues, enrollment counts, anytime we need those. Marcy is very quick to respond with those counts to help in anything that we need. And then also, we just, we bounce ideas off each other when it comes to the statistical analysis side of things or the art jazz, the more technical side of things. So those are all the ways that we've coordinated and it was a lot in a short amount of time. But I'll turn it over to Marcy if she has anything to add. Yeah, I really appreciated having a partner with Miranda and collaborating with her. She's been very valuable. She's a statistical genius, if you don't already know. She does great with data analysis, so I really appreciated being able to work with her and kind of just being able to contact her at any time. In addition to what Miranda has spoken about, some, I'd be happy to share some of the areas that I've been focusing on. I've been very intentional about gathering information on future developments and being more involved in those applications from earlier on in the process, as Miranda said. I really appreciated the invitation by, not just the city of Meridian staff, but other municipalities whose families we serve to be involved and be invited and participate in those pre-app meetings where we sit with the developers, which allows me to proactively gather data instead of reacting to the data later on. I have been systematically tracking the developments from, throughout the process, so from the applications through the preliminary plat and final plat approvals and then I continuing to track them through the construction phases until I see that students are starting to live and move into those subdivisions. With this information, I hope to be able to refine our student generation rates and I think it's important during this crazy time of growth in our area that we do reanalyze our rates to determine if the numbers that we are using are accurate. And then I've just finished this project I'm super proud of. I just consolidated all of the development data in all of their various stages from all of the seven agencies where our students live and so into one source so that I will be able to easily have a collective picture of what kind of growth is happening in our area. For example, it might be by attendance area, it could be by trustee zone. I would take a school like, attendance area like Meridian High School that is predominantly large, city of Meridian population, but also has developments in the city of Kuna and Canyon County, maybe some Ada County or Star Middle School that does have a portion of a really strong growing portion of Meridian, but also Star, which is growing immensely in Eagle. So that will allow me to look at that, all of that information in one picture. So I'm really looking forward to starting to use that information.
That's a long way from where we were at last year.
Which was neither people, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, addressing questions openly or through you?
Let's just go through me that way.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much and I can tell it's like night and day, the coordination level and the data we're getting is really improving a lot and I appreciate the coordination. Probably the biggest thing I've seen, and I know Councilman Cavanagh's brought it up and a few other folks on city council as well, now I can tell we're developing this multifamily student generation rate and it feels like it's very far from what we were using previously, like point students per unit or per residential unit. It's much smaller, to the point that a three hundred sixty unit multifamily development, we think has thirty-six kids coming into the school district and I guess, I'm a little nervous personally to see such a huge change in the student generation rate. And understood that you have to use your analytics to come up with something, but that was my exact question was, what are your intentions? Can you find examples to back test to see, hey, we thought this many kids would have come in, here's an old development where we could have applied it and then see, what are we doing to test that assumption? And the reason I think it's important, especially now, is that we're really making decisions live based on that student generation rate. So you could just give us more of a flavor for that.
Yeah, so I can speak to that. So we actually were using zero students per unit for multifamily in the past and eight for single-family. So we came up from zero to point one. Zero was being used not because we thought, or I say "we" because I worked at the school district at that time, zero was being used not because West Ada, you know, thought that there wasn't gonna be students coming from multifamily homes. But there was such a small fraction of multifamily homes in our area that using zero for multi and point eight for single family was evening itself out very well. We were still getting good estimates and estimates were coming back properly and with good actual data to back it up in the future. So we came up with, we came up from zero to point one because we saw there was more multifamily coming in and we needed to look at how those would bring kids in. So we looked at the school, we looked at the student, what was it, student age population per household and the number of households in the area, not just in the city of Meridian because it is West Ada issue as a whole and not just the city of Meridian. And we looked at what ratio of apartments to single-family homes we have in the area and compared those numbers. We looked at methodologies from other districts, but we didn't look at other districts' numbers to drive that. We only looked at local data to drive that point one. And the only piece that wasn't local data was about, I think it was three percent of students from our homeschooled or private school based on a national survey. There wasn't local statistics based for homeschool and private school, so we used that national survey. Every other piece, aside from that small three percent, was local data that was used to drive those numbers. And yes, we can in the future and we do have a plan to meet, Marcy and I already have, I don't think we have it on the books, but we've discussed meeting again in the spring of this next year to look at, okay, what actual numbers are we coming up with? Now that these new developments that I spoke to earlier are coming in and they're coming in different than we've ever seen them before, what kind of numbers are we getting from those developments? What kind of student generation is being pulled from those? And we'll have to do it again. As this area has a shortage of single-family homes, those families will be moving into multifamily homes temporarily until we get caught up with our single-family homes in the area. So we'll continue to refine that number each year as needed until things start to even out, if things ever start to even out with growth here.
Mr. Mayor, I think, and I was, thank you, Miranda, that's fantastic. I'm really happy to hear that you're getting actual data information and it's not based on a guess or an estimate. And I would imagine it looks really different across cities as well. Our area tends to be more suburban and maybe there's more children per household than other parts of Boise. I am a real estate broker and in my opinion, we are gonna start seeing people permanently living in multifamily housing and attached housing. And I think it's gonna be a couple of years maybe before we can do that. But I hope that we do continue to analyze this at least on an annual basis because I think we'll see a shift from those families living in those, in the apartments and higher dense housing in a temporary way to them being, living there in a permanent way as housing costs, not just the shortage, but as housing costs rise. I anticipate that we will need to reanalyze that ratio for that reason as well.
Can I ask a question to Miranda for the council in general? Now you're getting a different set of data, how are you using it in your decision-making on the development piece?
Mr. Mayor. And trustee president Johnson?
Chair.
Okay, chair. You comment at the start of this about elevating the data is an understatement because I think that as the district has really leveled up the information that they're providing to the council, I think we as a body have really responded to rely on that information here. It's an aha moment, you know, that that information is included in our staff report. Typically, a week doesn't go by where there's an annexation, that there's not a comment from anybody on the council related to the data that the district has provided about students. And you have heard council members be opposed to annexations or ask for lower density because we hear, we've heard from you and your predecessors and we hear from your patrons, our taxpayers about the impacts on our schools. And so that data is incredibly critical, I think for me, for all of us, when we are rendering a decision about if we're going to approve an annexation. So I think it's why Councilmember Strater's question was so poignant, is we rely on this information and so we want to make sure, and we trust the information you're providing is accurate. It's just a shift from what we've seen in the past, so we want to make sure that getting a better understanding of the processes to truth those numbers. To Councilman Perot, we're seeing a lot of multifamily and we've got multifamilies coming around, all of us with young kids in those neighborhoods. And so we want to make sure that we're not doing a disservice to those students by not having the most accurate information we've got in the application.
Who else was gonna answer? Mr. Mayor? I can all maybe give a similar perspective. It, I think, is rarely the only reason that an application doesn't move forward, but in my mind, it's an incredibly important reason. If development's gonna put a lot of students into a school system and many of the schools they attend will be overcrowded, I think that's important to know. The boundary work, I think, that's happening gives us a lot of comfort that you guys are proactively managing the student populations at each school and that, for me, has been a huge development that gives me a lot of hope that we can manage through it in the long run. The other thing too is, it even plays into things like amenities as well. If someone's making the argument that there are only five kids in this development, I'm not sure if that's true or not, right? But if the data indicates that, then, you know, we push a lot on tot lots and certain amenities that are geared toward families if we think families are gonna be living somewhere. So we also want to make sure development fits what we expect for the community and the population that's living there is served with high-quality development that meets their needs. So I'd say it's multiple things.
I asked the question because we just, we just made it an action on Tuesday and I think it's kind of important to share the information. First thing, one of our actions is we are moving some of our bonding debt forward and to keep our levy rate same and pay off some of our debt earlier. That decision was made on Tuesday. When we did that, we put in an assumption around that process to look at a potential long-term bond, to start to be able to have flexibility. Now, this is, you know, we don't know what that looks like from a public support standpoint, but I think we've been trying to get to a spot where we maybe have more flexibility to be able to build schools as development growth is happening rather than having overcrowded schools and then have this craziness. And that's one of the mechanisms today that we're looking at. So we've, we're starting to have those conversations and the data around the development and what you guys are approving actually helps, can help us from a proactive standpoint. So that link that the two, Marcy and Miranda are making is really, can be really helpful for that when we start to look at forecasting.
I think in general, having been on the NZI and now in council, there's just a little bit more confidence as we make the decision. I mean, for a while, it was just sort of like, we know that, I mean, to be really candid, we weren't even sure that the numbers we were receiving were accurate and so there was this nervousness, this, you know, okay, we have the data, but is it really actually helping us make the decision? So the more we hear about how the numbers are being calculated, the more we hear about the fact that we are getting real data, I think there's a lot more confidence in our ability to make the right, what we feel is the right decision, so.
Mr. Mayor and chairman, just curious if you could give me a high-level understanding? When we look at the numbers and we see, oh, you know, Mountain View High School is a hundred over capacity and the middle school is fifty under and, you know, those different numbers that we see and we see the impacts that this particular development will have, but I don't have a good sense of, at what point do you start processing and realize money and the bonding has to be there? But at what point do you decide, okay, we have ground for a new school, we are going to have to build an elementary school or middle school? Is it when you're at capacity? Is it when it's ten percent over? Or, because we know you're never completely full, there's the shifting that you can do. You know, patrons don't like that necessarily, but sometimes you have to. How does that process work? I mean, should we be worried, oh, that school's at capacity, we should really pull back? Or there's limited overcapacity that you can handle before really having a serious situation?
So let me, let me kind of answer and I'd actually defer to Marcy for some of, because I think we, where we've been and where we're going are two different things. So where we've been is, you know, we almost needed to have, build up some public support by the overcrow, like the overcrowding sort of created the demand, created the burning platform for, to build the school. But where we're trying to go is to be kind of, to joint, right? So as we see development and that data coming in, you know, we, you guys approve things before they're built, so we can use that information to be proactively looking at where the potential growth is at. We haven't done that yet though. And then we're also proactively talking about how do we create a funding mechanism that allows us to do that? Because we've been bonding so regularly that people get bonding fatigue, right? And also, it's always behind the eight ball, it's always after the fact. So we don't know how it will work, but I think we're trying to figure out ways to proactively manage. And it really helps that you guys are not approving everything in one direction and then we're having to figure it out after the fact. It actually helps a lot to have the data working together and then the conversations so we can see what's coming at us. And I would, Marcy, can, you actually do the data, so.
Yeah, well, to speak to the capacities, you know, we've really, I've really worked this year on trying to calculate the.
Marcy, can you pull the mic close, please?
I sure can. I would be more than happy to do a little ditty in the mic. So, and it's written into our policy for our attendance area committees when we're redrawing a boundary to determine the difference between a design capacity and a program capacity. So it's very familiar to me and maybe not to you, so I'll explain it a little bit. A design capacity is something that basically our architect says, this is the capacity of your school, this is how many students you can fit into the school. And, and the program capacity is a little bit different because in each school, we might have classrooms dedicated to a special program that we can't fit a classroom full of 25 kids in that classroom. So we have to take that classroom count out of the capacity count to determine how many kids we can actually fit in that school. Some of our schools have many programs. We might have an EL program, it might be a title school, it might have a PBI classroom, it might have preschool. And so those all have to be taken into consideration. So I've been working on calculating those and it might change from year to year as a program changes. That, that number, the design capacity isn't going to change, but that program capacity could change. And maybe when we see an area that, and this has happened before, where we see a school that does, that is overcrowded, that maybe we can look at moving a program out of that school, put it in a different school that might be under, a little bit under crowded or under capacity. So, so that's, and I, coming from an elementary world, and it's a lot more cut and dry in an elementary world, you can fit 25 kids in a classroom, you fit 32 kids for fourth and fifth grade, things like that. In high school, it's a little bit different, middle school, it's a little bit different because those kids are moving around so much. So some of the ways we determine whether you're, whether they're overcrowded is determining if a teacher has to leave for their prep and allow another teacher to move into their classroom. So when that starts happening, we know we're, we know we're reaching an overcapacity state. Can we still function that way? Yes. That teacher can leave their classroom, go to the copy room, go to the staff room. We're not causing harm to children, they're still being educated, they might not even know the difference. But that's when we start saying, okay, now we're worried. So, and that, again, might be different in each. And so that's a coordinated effort that we, conversations with the principals and the teachers and what does it look like in your, in your building, what's happening? Because I might not be able to, it's easier, like I said, it's easier in an elementary way and I can say you have this many fifth grade classes, this many fourth grade classes, but in those high schools, when you have a lot of different classes. So that's just something that we have to figure. But like I said, there's a little bit more leeway when it comes to, that's why we can see Mountain View at their number so overcrowded because teachers are moving around during their prep. Does that help answer your question?
The other piece, and I think it's credit to Dr. Rannells and the staff and Chair Cloppesheimer, who's chair, well, last summer, so between when we met last time and now, we have a policy on this that defines design capacity, defines program capacity. We actually define emergency or some, like an additional emergency capacity, I can't, that's not the right name, but, so that's defined. So we're all speaking the same language, we're all using the same counts and the same numbers. And then we have, in that policy, we also define how we'll do boundary line attendance areas and who's involved in that, which is why we have ex officio members from the cities now. So it's all, that new policy was adopted in July or August. So that's changed and that's allowed us to have a better framework for managing and talking through some of these things.
So, Mr. Mayor? To follow up, then, I guess the answer is it depends. That's very helpful because it gives us a better understanding that, I think, from Miranda's presentation to us, making sure we understand that, hey, there's a red flag here, they really are at overcapacity, they're going to have to shift boundaries if, you know, the development has this impact, and making sure we understand that. Because it sounds like we just can't go by the number alone because there are other things in play. So that would be helpful from our end, then, to make sure we're truly understanding the situation and not just look at the number. And I know, you know, patrons and people testify about development, oh, look, you know, it's overcapacity, don't approve the development, when, when actually, yes, you can make it work, it will fit, it's, nothing is going to be at risk, child's education's not going to be at risk. But there might be ways we have to make sure we fully understand the situation as it's presented to us instead of just the number alone. I don't know what that is, but I'll let you work on that.
It's almost like you need a thermometer on the side of the school district that shows overall capacity moving forward, what's approved. I don't think you credit, I appreciate it. Any further questions or comments at this time?
Sometimes it's also, it's not just classroom, it's also busing. And I think the South Meridian area where myself and Chair Johnson have, those are our zones, we're seeing so much development coming into those south areas and there is so much backed-up need, especially because the pandemic kind of brought us back away from a bond, that really, if you would think about it, you really should think, there really probably need three schools and a middle, three elementary schools and a middle school in that south area. And this year, it got so packed that for next year, we decided this year that next year, we would be busing excess kids from South Meridian to north, to above the freeway, north the freeway. And that's an extreme, I don't think we've ever done that before. And so that tells you how bad the situation is back in the South Meridian area, where if we could get some additional funding to be able to do additional elementary schools, it would really relieve a lot of the pressure. We've done a number of things thanks to suggestions from, from the mayor and from Chair Johnson, you know, to help relieve some of that, and that's why we're able to bring some of the kids north, but it's a temporary fix. And so there's definitely some serious situations going on.
We, oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Just to follow up, we have, I, we always, we know that serious area in our area, but the other serious area is out where we're going to go towards. And I think, Marcy, you correct me if I'm wrong, but we're actually seeing faster growth in the northwest, west Meridian area than we are even in the south. So what you heard about south, you could just add additional in that, to that area. Is that?
That's correct. And in combination with Star, which is also exploding and that very west part of Eagle, so those are definitely areas that I'm like honed in on and have a little heart failure over.
Madam Chair, would this be an appropriate time to update us on the school boundary progress? I haven't been keeping up on what's happening with that process.
Yeah, I'll actually, because, I'll actually, Marcy would be the best person to answer because she read pretty much the whole thing.
Yeah, I got some, a few extra gray hairs this fall from the amazing process. And again, so grateful for the policy that we have that sets the guidelines. We did have the attendance area committee, obviously, create a proposal to draw a boundary line for Oaihe High School. And then we also made some adjustments with some, a couple of other schools. So Chaparral Elementary was on a modified schedule, Seven Oaks Elementary located in Eagle was also on a modified schedule. In order to utilize our buildings and help alleviate some overcrowded schools near those schools, we asked the amazing boundary committee to, attendance area committee, to look at those areas and see if we can find a solution to those, as well as the overcrowding at Hillsdale Elementary, which was causing students to go to overflow schools, for lack of a better term. So, so they ended up creating a proposal, our board approved the proposal. So we have an attendance area for Oaihe High School. We made some minor adjustments to a couple of, to a couple of middle schools, very minor. Very few students were affected by those. And then we actually touched in the double digits, I'll just say, elementary schools to make some, some pretty effective changes. So I'll be interested to see if the projections are, with the continued growth, are going to be close, hopefully, but I feel really good about what we've, what we were able to do and spread out some of that growth from some of those schools that were really, really crowded.
The projections that Marcy gave us when we made the decision showed every elementary school below the capacity amount. Now, again, it's projections and we don't know what will come back from COVID, but also, we don't have anybody in a cap for busing anymore. So all of, what, the one challenge we have is just where our school placement is at, we do have to bus some kids from South Meridian over to North Meridian because of just the way the membership is at. So, and that's, if there's no Locust Grove Overpass, that's a really a challenge from a time, it's going, or Minder, yeah, Overpass, that's a real challenge, like, we would love to have that Minder Overpass. Did I say that right, Marcy?
Absolutely. And just, just to follow up, another challenge was that we did lose quite a few students this year. And so trying to figure out who's coming back, where they went, how many did we actually lose, how many moved or how many just was homeschooling, waiting for COVID to have relief? So I'm just, you know, crossing our fingers that the, that next year is easy.
So if I can speak to the COVID point, Mr. Mayor? So the most recent school impact tables that you've received from me do use the updated school boundaries for the next school year, but because enrollment is down because of COVID, not because as would be the actual numbers, we are still using, I'm still using enrollment from pre-COVID with some adjustments for students that have moved to Pleasant View Elementary. And then spoke to Marcy today, actually, about when do we start using actual enrollment? West Ada has started using actual enrollment for next year in their letters. I expect that I'll start using it in my tables probably after school secretaries leave because they are amazing that they hammer through their work before they leave for the summer to really get kids into their next schools. So I plan to start using next year's actual enrollments that are coming from the district in June.
Is there access to data from, well, the census, is that going to be helpful when we get that information? Is it going to be helpful to, do we get information from, say, how many students are coming in from out of state through the DMV? Or is there any, is there, can you tell us if there's any other places that we can get the information outside of what you're doing to do those counts?
So I think the census data is the biggest tool. Census data breaks down population by ages, it breaks down the number of households, there are so many subcategories in those counts that it is such a valuable tool. So it will be, it will be really amazing to have that updated data and not just have the estimates, because you get census data for last year, but a lot of times it's estimates because, of course, they only do the census every 10 years. They'll still put out numbers from last year, though. So that's what we're using. Also, the census data typically pulls in the American Community Survey data as well, so that is being updated also, but I just lump it in. When I say census data, that typically has the American Community Survey data in as well.
We also have on our website now enrollment by, even what, early enrollment at IGT school, just for a current day look, but I wouldn't use that for forecasting.
Any additional questions or comments? Well, with that, let's, let's add a third item under discussion topics real quick. It is someone's birthday in this room. On his birthday. There is some stuff that was brought in the back, but I would love it if everyone could join us in a round of happy birthdays to Miranda.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Miranda. Happy birthday to you.
Be the most formal birthday thing. I get that a lot.
With that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor? I move that we adjourn.
Second motion. Motion second to adjourn the ready city council meeting discussion. If not, pay for signature by the committee. Aye? Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Mayor City Council adjourned.